Number three, so please don't take anything as a facial response because again, we would love to see your faces, but we can't. I would invite you, of course, to move forward where you can. Just a note of order for the board, the mics are hot all night and so just be-
Please try not to touch them too much.
Do not move them as was the direction, just as I did such. But also because we're in an open forum, even communicating across to one another in, board member to board member will require a mic in this setting. Okay, so with that said, can we have a roll call?
Dr. Genovasi?
Here.
Mr. Kapadia?
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Dr. Resnick?
I think so.
Ms. Dislotman?
Here.
Ms. Tracy?
Here.
There you go. Ms. Williams Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 4th, 2024. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Fios. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purpose of Board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. That's www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. With that, please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a first and second to pass the minutes for our October 14th meeting?
First.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, the minutes pass. Would like to go ahead and move on to our student rep this evening for her report. Erin?
As we wrap up the first marking period and students settle into their schedules, we are proud to highlight several key accomplishments and community efforts. There have been many fall sports achievements this year. The girls soccer team won the CBC tournament and the boys football team completed an undefeated regular season. Finally, girls cross country had an invitation to the meet of champions for the first time since 2009. In response to the recent hurricane, our school continued supporting Mountain Heritage High School with several fundraisers and community events. Student Council hosted an Uncle Ed Ice Cream fundraiser donating a portion of the proceeds to the school. This Thursday, November 21st, Student Council will host the annual Powderpuff Game collecting donations for the school as well. The HVCHS Athletic Council, together with student athletes, organized the 2024 Sports Fest, raising over $1,000 for hurricane relief. Yes Club is hosting a clothing exchange and athletic teams are currently selling wristbands. Finally, our student ambassadors are collecting items for care packages as students at Mountain Heritage High School are returning to school. We completed our second year of student, teacher, caregiver conferences and we are moving into the second marking period. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Erin. As we move through a agenda, I'll make comments so I don't have an official Board President report. Dr. Therese?
I would just like to point out a few things that happened over the last few weeks. Our students and our teachers are working very closely together to do cross-content and cross-grade level activities. Some of these, the students are planning with their teachers and some of the teachers are working together to really bring alive some of the things we talked about in our strategic planning, where students got to get to work across grade levels. And we're also talking about ways that we can get students to work together across schools. Some of the things we floated is possibly a field day that will happen, where all students can do that field day together. The District Parent Council has talked to me about that. While I think we still will have our home base things, doing something at the middle school in the spring, well, bringing our fifth grades together is something that we're looking into. The Yes Group, our environmental society students here at the high school are working with Ms. McGrath, their advisor, to pull together resources about the wildfires that are going on all over New Jersey, for our teachers and our students and our families, to help students that might be struggling with some of the things they're seeing on TV that are happening with the environment. When you do this work with students, it does create a level of anxiety sometimes that we need to recognize and provide resources for. But also some things that they're going to be using, they're going to give the teachers to use in their classrooms. So we're very excited that our students took the initiative to do this work. And also at the last week, November 14th, all of our elementary schools participated, along with a lot of other school districts across the nation, Lawrenceville being another one in Mercer County, to commemorate Ruby Bridges' walk into school the first time in 1960. The kids walked to school, rolled to school, rode their bikes. Or in Bear Tavern's case, they did a little look around the school because they're not a walking district. And then they came in and learned about Ruby, they learned about three other cases that came before Ruby's case, the first one in late 1800s. I'll share all that in my newsletter that will be coming to your home soon. And then the kids talked about how they could, at their appropriate age level, right? How do we make school welcoming for our new students that are coming in? Because we know we have new students coming in every day with our new developments and we know that there'll be some more development happening in Hopewell Borough coming soon. So the kids had a great time, we all enjoyed walking, they had some celebrity guest walkers, and the kids had lots of great ideas on how to make students feel more welcome. They heard a little bit about my story as a military brat of moving all around and how it made a lot of difference for me when kids were welcoming and invited me into the school. And there was always one or two kids that did that, right? So I was encouraging them to figure out ways that they can do the same. So that's our report for this week. I know we have a lot of guests tonight, so I want to keep it brief.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Therese. With that, we have a lot of folks to acknowledge and I want to pass the microphone over to Ms. Corey Rutt.
No, let's do the kids first.
Okay. Gotcha. We're going to recognize our National Merit Scholars. That's what we're going to do next.
Good evening and thank you so much for having me back. It's always great to see you all. The National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students enter the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT, National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, the PSAT, a test which serves as an initial screen of approximately 1.6 million entrants each year. Of the 1.6 million entrants, roughly 50,000 students with the highest PSAT Selection Index scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship Program. About 34,000 of the approximately 50,000 high school, high scorers on the PSAT receive letters of commendation in recognition of their outstanding academic promise. Commended students are named on the basis of a nationally applied Selection Index score that varies from year to year and varies from state to state. I will say, New Jersey has one of the highest selection indexes, so these students are not only just amazing on their own, but they're especially amazing because they come from New Jersey. This year, we have 18 commended scholars at HVCHS. In addition to those 18 commended scholars, about 16,000 students, or approximately one-third of the 50,000 high scorers, are notified that they have qualified as semifinalists. To ensure that academically talented young people from all parts of the United States are included in this talent pool, semifinalists are designated on a state representational basis. So in this case, New Jersey is kind of not the place to be because they're so good and we can only have a few. So they're the highest scoring entrance in each state and this year we have three National Merit semifinalists at HVCHS. So tonight, out of 1.6 million entrants across the country, we are recognizing the students who scored in the top 3% and have earned the designation of commended scholar or semifinalists. Now, these individuals that we're recognizing tonight are scholars of merit in many senses. Obviously, their test scores are excellent. From an academic perspective, they are truly exceptional. However, beyond the classroom, they are talented in so many other ways. They are award-winning artists, varsity athletes, community activists, talented musicians, and leaders in our school. Some of them weren't able to attend this evening because they had other remarkable accomplishments that they needed to contribute to, including participation in college-level courses, rehearsals for the Nutcracker, and speaking engagements. So this is quite a group. As you know from previous years, I think it's really important for you to know more about them than just their test scores. So instead of me introducing them, I'm going to bring the group forward. They're each going to introduce themselves and share a fun fact about themselves with you. These fun facts haven't been pre-approved. I am unsure what we're going to get, but it's going to be great. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you these amazing members of the class of 2025.
Hi, I'm Nina. My fun fact is that the fastest time I've solved a 3x3 Rubik's Cube bin is 11.45 seconds.
Could you speak closer to the mic? Oh, sure, we'd love to.
Wait, which one is it?
That was a practice run.
It's a big one, okay. I'm Nina and my fun fact is that the fastest time I've solved a Rubik's Cube bin is 11.45 seconds.
Hi, I'm Seraphina and my fun fact is my first cat's name was Meowmeows.
Hi, I'm Manisha and my fun fact is that my favorite video game is Horizon because it has a woman in it and she's really cool. And she's like, yeah.
Hi, I'm Zoe and my fun fact is that I believe I make a pretty decent tiramisu.
Hi, I'm Andrew. A fun fact about me is that I play card games for fun.
All right, so as you can see, they're talented, they're amazing, they're fun in so many different ways and I'm really excited to present them to you. So thank you again for having us and we appreciate your time.
We are going to take a brief second to take a picture, but I do want to just share our, the board acknowledgement of these amazing individuals. And I superbly love the fun facts, for sure, but also very much appreciate how much you cultivate your well-rounded skills in other areas besides academics. So thank you.
Jeff?
Okay, moving on to our presentation by Ms. Tana Smith and Corey Rutt. Ready?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Nope.
I'm trying not to move this. I was told not to move this. Is this good now? Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. This is the annual presentation on the findings from the 2023-2024 school year. This is the full year report of the Student Safety Data Systems. You may remember Dan DeStefan and I presented last fall, or excuse me, last winter, which was on the first half of last school year, which was just from September through December. So this is Report Periods 1 and 2. Next slide. There you go. All right. So I put in the presentation the forms. You've seen these before, we show them every time we do this presentation. There are four pages that the state requires for the students' data system forms. Any HIB reports, Hib reports are also reported on these forms. This is something that each building administrator needs to fill out for their building every time there is an incident. Wrong way. All right, the last page of the form includes information on student restraints and seclusion, which is relatively new to this report. I know Ms. Donardo has spoken about this in previous board meetings, just explaining, and so I put the definitions up there for you to see. This next slide is the breakdown of offense by school with the incident type across the top and the school along the side. This year, I've listed how the state defines each of the incident types so that you can see what is included. For instance, what makes up violence, what makes up vandalism, and what the state defines that as. The substance category does not include random drug screening results. And I know last year there were still random drug screening at the high schools, so this report still does include that. However, that does not fall under the substance category. These numbers only refer to students who were found in possession or under the influence while in the building. Please note that the last two columns are not included in the incident totals. However, we do need to report those incidents to the state. The weapons, what I will say, you know, we're not happy that we see three there for Timberline, but we are overly cautious and that is what our principals at each of our buildings take everything very seriously. So what we report would not be reported in most other districts. For instance, a pocket knife keychain that is about this, this big was something that was reported, where in most districts, they would laugh and say, no, we're not reporting that. So we take everything very seriously. A toy that looks like a gun, that would be something that we would report. Other districts do not do so. You may remember, HVRSD, we've had threat assessment teams in our district for over eight years, but the state requires it now. It's a mandatory thing that every school district needs to have. We are not required to report these numbers to the state yet, but as a board, you shared that you were interested in seeing those results when we had this board policy passed last year. So if you look in the yellow box to the left, you will see those numbers. Again, our administrators are overly cautious, making sure to fully go through the process if there is any indication of an issue. Last year, there were two identified threats. There were four other situations where they went through the screening process but did not move forward with that. When things are looked at as a threat, they go through a process, the parents are involved, the police are involved, a plan is created. And I'm not going to speak to the specifics of the students or the type of students, but please know that it was a whole-school plan where the administrators are working with the counselors, are working with child study team members if they are needed, working with family, working with the police, working with any outside to make sure that the students are cared for and that they're getting the supports that they need. Next. Here's a three-year trend of incidents. So if you look to 21, 22, we were still coming out of that pandemic, post-pandemic. So our numbers were lower, we did discuss it back at the time. While vaping falls under the tobacco policy, if other substances are included, for instance, THC, then it would be considered under the substance indicator. I know I mentioned this before when it came to threat assessments, our administrators are also very, very cautious when we talk about violence. So anytime we had, for instance, two students thought about having a fight and they met to do so, there was no actual fight, but that was recorded in that way. So our administrators take everything very seriously, they follow the letter of the law. Other school districts would never even look at that as something to report. We're working on that, whether we really should be reporting things like that, trying to make sure that we are getting accurate data. But just so you are all aware, the administrators do take this very seriously. We were happy to see that our substance numbers decreased from the previous year. We've discussed before that substance abuse is being seen, a rise in numbers of substance abuse is being seen all over the country. And according to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the rapidly evolving policy landscape at the state level poses significant challenges for preventing marijuana use by youth. Greater public acceptance, declining perception of risk, increasing availability, product diversification, and pervasive marketing all contribute to an increase in youth marijuana use. We are happy that we saw numbers decrease in our report. Wrong way. One more. There should be one more in there. All right, I will just speak to, there should be one more slide in there, I don't know why it's not in there. There is a slide on discipline, a three-year trend, so I will make sure that that gets into the report that's shared. But the numbers were for the district. The nice thing to see was that our out-of-school suspensions decreased and our in-school suspensions did increase just a bit. It includes all of the suspensions and consequences that resulted from Hib investigations, other conduct violations. And one thing to note, there may be multiple students involved in one incident. So if two students may be found to be stealing from the cafeteria together, it would be listed as one incident on the data form. However, individual consequences would be given to each student based on the student code of conduct and consequences that the board has recommended, they would be split. So students wouldn't get all out-of-school suspension, they might get a day of in-school, a day of out-of-school, things like that. So the number of type of incidents of suspensions would increase, but it didn't necessarily mean that the number of incidents increased. So you can see the difference when you look for the two slides. There were changes last year in the student code of conduct, which focused on shortening the length of some of the suspensions, favoring ISS, which is in-school suspension, over OSS, which is out-of-school suspension, and including mandatory educational components related to the infractions. All right, at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Corey, who's going to share about our programming.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, excellent. My name is Corey Rutt, I'm the District Supervisor of Counseling. Thank you for taking a moment to listen to what we have to say this evening. So I want to talk with you now about best practices in addressing student safety. According to a joint statement by a group of associations representing school psychologists, school principals, and school resource officers, among others, there are several best practices related to creating safe school environments. Among them are building strong school-community connections, proactive teaching of social-emotional skills, access to mental health support and preventative, as well as responsive efforts to address things that impact student safety. You can go on to the next slide. HVRSD has a lot to report in this regard. What I've done here is tried to just list some of the highlights by each best practice category and then I'll go on to tell you a little bit more about everything that we do. Some of the highlights within each of these areas are listed here. I'll elaborate on just a few. In terms of community connectedness, we have a great partnership with Hopewell Valley Municipal Alliance. Also, through our relationship with the Mercer County Prosecutor's Office, Detective Marlon Webb trains faculty members in how to lead students in restorative circle discussions. Through a partnership with Rutgers University Behavioral Health, we offer parent-university events during the school year, in addition to hosting other speakers and special events to try to connect with as many families throughout the year as possible. In fact, we have a parent-university event tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM via Zoom, in which Samantha Awadala, our onsite Rutgers Behavioral Health clinician, will discuss habits for building healthy families. Two, we proactively teach social-emotional skills. We have implemented the Character Strong curriculum in grades K through 8. And through this curriculum, weekly lessons in which themes like respect, responsibility, and empathy are taught and woven then also into morning meetings at the elementary level. Counselors also proactively push into classrooms and deliver lessons in problem-solving, conflict resolution, emotional vocabulary, and others. New this year, we're happy to report that we have a Tier 2 intervention called Hope Squad that will roll out to groups of students in grades 4 through 12. Number three, in terms of mental health supports, HVRSD is fortunate to have a number of school counselors, school psychologists, and social workers throughout our buildings. Air therapy dogs are present in each school. And through the BAT team and our onsite Rutgers clinician, we provide access to therapy for students who might not otherwise be able to obtain it. Lastly, we engage in preventative and responsive safety programming. Alice safety training is required for staff. School safety teams and threat assessment teams meet several times a year. Faculty are trained about the HIB policy and students are taught ways to identify and respond to bullying behavior. We have a district SEL committee that was integral in bringing Character Strong to our students. We have school resource officers and in each building, there is an anti-bullying specialist. Additionally, we have implemented best practices related to bullying response, including discipline, counseling, restorative practices, and skill-building for both offenders and victims. On to the next slide. I'm not going to go through the exhaustive list, but needless to say, there we do even more. Leadership Core, for example, delivers lessons focused on self-awareness, self-management, for example, time management and healthy versus unhealthy habits, interpersonal and relationship skills, self-awareness and stress management, responsible decision-making, and prejudice reduction. The Panda Club offers outreach to students regarding drug and alcohol use, so it's students-to-student communication, in an effort to prevent, obviously, prevent drug and alcohol use. We're also fortunate to have a highly skilled group of counselors who implement some counseling approaches that might be seen and used in a therapeutic- who implement some counseling approaches that might be seen and used in a therapeutic setting. Motivational interviewing, for example, is used by our student assistance counselors, as are some cognitive behavioral techniques. It's important to note, however, that inside the school is not a place where therapy happens, with the exception of our Rutgers clinician. As mentioned, when appropriate, we work to connect families with outside resources for therapy. Lastly, recognizing that some students need more support in the area of social-emotional skill building, as part of our efforts related to multi-tiered systems of support, we're looking into a Tier Two intervention to address this need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from board members?
I had a question. Thank you so much for this presentation, for sharing it in advance. Ms. Smith and Ms. Rudd, really appreciate it. And we had a chance to talk over email a bit, so I just wanted to reiterate one of my questions because, you know, I've seen this presentation a few times now, and it always strikes me that we are doing so much, right? But I think we also noted that we've really seen the number of HIBs jump up last year. And so I'm wondering if you can just share a bit about where you think we should be directing our resources to address that increase in HIBs?
Sure. So as I mentioned, I think over email to you, we are doing so many things. Yet, there is a national, as well as a worldwide crisis in terms of mental health issues among our youth. And unfortunately, we don't exist in isolation of that. Studies have indicated that when students are struggling with mental health issues, they are more likely to exhibit behaviors that are considered internalizing or externalizing behaviors. And those behaviors, research has found, indicate that when students are exhibiting these behaviors, they are more likely to become the targets of potential bullying. So there is that piece, and that's one reason I'm very excited to report that we are looking into Tier Two interventions that don't rely solely on our school counselors for implementation, that can be implemented by any faculty member who receives training in them. Also, I do want to point out that because we do so much education around what is potentially bullying, we, I think, are seeing more and more people come forward, perhaps, with issues that may not have been addressed in that manner before. So those are my theories.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will move into public comment for specifically the presentation just provided. So members of the public are invited to address the Hopewell Valley Board of Education, specifically on the 2023-24 periods one and two student safety data system report, for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent of schools to do so. The Board of Education may also opt to take this matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This is assisting us with record-keeping. With that said, direction from the timekeeper, and public comment will open following.
Yes. So, hi. As stated, you have three minutes to talk. When you have 30 seconds left, I will put up the yellow to give you a warning. And then when the three minutes are up, I will put up the red. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment on this topic and open general public comment. Same standards apply, but you can speak for three minutes during this period on any topic. Again, ask to state your name, address, and municipality, and sign in at the podium.
Aware that on October 14th, a community member requested that the board review our transgender and gender non-conforming student policy. I know that the board agreed that they would review said policy, and I'm here this evening to say, first of all, to offer gratitude. Hopewell was really ahead of the curve on this. Our policy was adopted, and I believe June of 2016. As a parent, raising a trans daughter and a non-binary child, knowing that policy exists for the safety of my children has meant a lot. That policy existing in this school district has also informed behaviors within the school district. And we have seen and we have heard tell of lived experience of trans children, trans students, who aren't in districts without a policy like this. We have seen how difficult it is for them. We have seen how high the numbers are in cases of bullying and violence against those students. And so I want to thank this district for having a policy like that on the books. And the second thing I would like to do is, I would beg you to please leave it there. Leave it there as it is. I have spent the last two weeks speaking with folks all across the state of New Jersey, showing them our policy. I have heard amazing things about the policy, that it's very strong, that it's very much in line with the mandate from the Department of Education. We need policies like this. So please, please leave it be. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Katie Angaron, 12 Park Avenue, Pennington. Back up. I want to thank you all for everything you do. I know this job is probably the hardest elected job in the valley, so thank you for doing it. And I imagine that a very big part of your job, as we heard tonight, is your mandate to ensure that children feel safe as they develop and make their way on their journey to who they are. There are a myriad of ways that you do this in the school district, whether it is filtering water, or the safety report we heard earlier today, social and emotional learning, having a trainer on the field with the sports, fire drills, and you're very attentive to mental health, as we just heard. You also make sure everybody has access to food. The transgender policy that this school district has is just another extension of safety and providing safety to our children. And I understand that there are some in this community that lack the
Penn's editing. My name is Amy Perlmutter, and I reside in Hopewell Township. And I would echo what the earlier two speakers have said, but I'd actually like to congratulate you. I'm a retired teacher who has had transgender children move through my classrooms in the last few years, and have seen districts who were not as forward-thinking as this one has been. And I just want to congratulate
So I'm Addison Allt of Hopewell Township, speaking on behalf of the robotics team. I just want to thank Dr. Treese and Principal Riley for helping us out. I think we've started to make some progress on resolving some of the uncertainty that we were facing. So it looks like we'll get slack pretty soon, and we've got a better understanding of when and how we can use facilities. So I think one lingering issue that doesn't, it's not urgent, but I might keep chewing on this bone, is trying to think about possible key-card access to certain rooms. Because as a technologist, I'm pretty aware that lots and lots of facilities around the country, you know, use that. And I'm thinking out loud here a little bit, but just want to share it with everybody that it might make sense to do that, because we've got a wonderful, wonderful facility in the shop here. Lots of people, lots of sponsors have given a lot of resources to get it set up, and we want to get as much use out of it as we can, while, of course, respecting all of the constraints that the district and administration are operating under. All righty? So anyway, thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Suze Polinsky. I live in Hopewell Township. I'm here as the parent of two HVRSD students, as a taxpayer, and as a practicing pediatrician, to express my unwavering support for Policy 5756, HVRSD's current transgender and gender non-conforming student policy. I'm grateful to live in a district whose administrators and Board of Education rely on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research to inform their policy decisions. I appreciate the board's commitment to ensuring policies are up to date, and I trust that your review will find this policy to be excellent as written. I won't take time now to read them in their entirety, but here's a partial list of the professional medical and mental health associations, whose policies affirm a recent affirming policy statements emphasizing the importance of inclusive, comprehensive, gender-affirming health care. I recognize that a school is not a health care facility, but it's the place where our children spend nearly half of their waking hours. So it's of the utmost importance that we ensure, and I'm taking these words from the US DOE's policy statement, that all students have the ability to learn in a safe and supportive setting, free from discrimination. Please
My name is Sarah Orf, and I live on Ned'sland Avenue in Titusville. And I want to echo the others and take this opportunity to thank the Board of Ed for your current policy regarding the transgender and gender non-conforming students. My children have already graduated, but I'm so grateful that they were able to go to school in an environment that supported and protected all students. And I think these policies are literally a matter of life and death. I recently did see a study from the National Library of Medicine that reported that 82% of transgender youth have considered killing themselves, and 40% have attempted suicide. And I just know that these kids, they need the support
Hello. My name is Briann Dixon, Hopewell Borough. I want to speak first as an alum of this district. I graduated in 2004. I still have a lot of friends and family in this district, and I am also a trans woman. And I feel it's important to have someone like me make a public comment, to remind everyone that the debates that we have heard from others are about real people. It's not a hypothetical, and it is extremely dehumanizing to feel the need to be here right now. And I want to thank you all, echo the thanks that we've heard already tonight. You've done tremendous work on this front, and it's really important work. I'll leave the facts and debates to others, but I just wanted to be present as myself, knowing that there are others like me here. Thank you.
Do we need to sign it? Yes, I do. Okay.
Hi. I think most of you know me. So my name is Carolyn McGrath. I'm both a resident of the township, but I'm also a teacher at the high school. And I've had the privilege of advising the Spectrum Club for the last five-plus years. And it's been a real privilege for me. I was asked by a former student to advise the club, and it was something I took on with great seriousness, because I know there's much work to do in supporting LGBTQ+ students in our schools. I hope that I've done a decent job. Specifically, with regards to transgender and gender non-conforming students, I am extremely thankful that I get to work and live in a community that values all students, but also that protects the rights of students who are more vulnerable than other students. As some of the previous speakers have said, transgender students experience higher rates of depression, suicide, and victimization. For many students, schools remain a hostile place. And I hope that that is not the case for many of our students. I believe it's not the case. And the kind of harms that face LGBTQ+ students and trans students particularly, both has impacts on mental health as well as academic performance. So because of this, of course, I am in support of our policy continuing. And I just want to add, in my personal experience, that honestly, trans students just want to live their lives. They want to live their lives free of bullying, harassment, and hate. And they just want to be regular kids. I have experienced transgender students' joy, resilience. It's time to go. It's time to go. And I just want to thank you again for all that you do. Thanks.
I'm a resident of Hopewell Township and I have two children at Hopewell Elementary School. When we relocated back to the area a year ago, we specifically only looked for homes in Hopewell Township because we have one gender expansive child who also has a lot of special education needs and that child is flourishing in this school. It is the brightest part of our life right now is watching how beautifully he is doing in this school. I pastor a church in Bucks County. My church wanted me to live in Bucks and I raise our children there. And we made the choice that for our own families flourishing, Hopewell Township was the place to do that. And at my church, we happen to host the Rainbow Room, which is for LGBTQ teens, and Roy G. Biv, which is for middle schoolers. And we watch the impact of these children who are raised in an environment or who are nourished in an environment that does not see them as a whole person. And I give thanks all of the time that that is not my own child's experience and I want that experience for every child. After this last election where we saw $150 million spent on ads targeting trans kids, my wife and I had to wonder, what is the point at which we need to leave to protect our child if this space doesn't stay a safe space for our child? And do we go internationally where the IEP needs won't get met even though maybe the gender-affirming part will be met? What part of their identity do we need to negotiate away? And we realized that staying firmly rooted in Hopewell Township was the part of our lives that made us feel safest right now because of how amazing this community has been, how well-supported our children are. And this is where they are flourishing. And so I would ask you to continue to affirm the policy you have, although it'd be great if they were gender expansive and not non-conforming, but that's a different question, just because I find that much more affirming. But I want to thank you for the, for how deliberately you have cultivated an environment where I am not constantly worried about my child's mental health where I would be in many, many other school districts. And I hope we can maintain that here.
My name is Claire Doyle and I'm a resident of Hopewell Township. This has been a real education for me in the most beautiful way. My kids went through Hopewell. My oldest child graduated with Breann and knows Ms. McGrath. And my younger child graduated in 2009. And at that time, she was Timothy Doyle and now she's Mecca Doyle. And she, somewhere in the high school years, realized that she was not a boy. And so we did what we could to support her through the journey. About three years ago, she kind of officially came out to her friends, who were great, and our family, who was great. And a couple days ago, I spoke with someone whose kids were in their twenties and said, oh, it's really good now. They're really accepting. So that was the first thing I heard. I had knots in my stomach coming here because I didn't know what to expect. I have wanted to, since the last, however long all of the nonsense has been going on, wanted to hide in the basement and not acknowledge, not let anybody know because I didn't feel we were safe, I didn't feel Mecca was safe. And this is brilliant and I applaud you and I hope you keep this going because I also am a retired clinical social worker and I got, had the privilege of working with kids who were questioning themselves and their mental health and their, everything about them was better once they started to figure out who they really were and were able to express themselves in that way. So I had to come in always. So thank you very much and I hope you keep your policy, which I wasn't really aware of until today. So this has been a real education.
My name is Samrono. I live in Hopewell Township. I have come, as basically everyone else has, to say that your transgender and gender non-conforming student policy is absolutely necessary to the wellbeing of your transgender and non-binary students. I have a couple statements from several of my friends who are themselves transgender about this policy. And everyone else has said everything already, but I just want to read these statements. From one of my friends, "As a trans student at CHS, the policy in place is extremely important for many students. While I personally am fortunate to have parents who will support me, not everyone lives in a home that is safe for them to be out and the policy allows them to have a space for them to be themselves in a welcoming environment, which is absolutely incredible. CHS's policy for transgender students is really amazing and should be kept. Everyone deserves to have equal opportunities and the policy is an important piece of that." Sorry, scrolling to the next thing. And from another of my friends, "As a child who was not in a particularly safe home environment for a good period of time, having a supportive school really makes a difference. Hopewell is fortunate to have a very supportive environment because being trans is hard enough in and of itself. But when you're living in an unsafe home as a trans person, school is really all you have." So again, I implore you, keep this policy. It is vital to the wellbeing of many of your students. Thank you.
My name is Tharren McDeal. I live in Hopewell Borough, parent of a special needs child who started in the school district four months before his third birthday through graduation. And thank you all for everything you did for him. I wanted to speak to the intersection between special needs parents and parents of children who are trans or gender non-conforming. And that intersection comes in the stress of raising a child who is different from the majority. It also comes in, the intersection is also there in the fear, as you spoke to, and the dread. The fear of knowing what happens to kids who are different or even adults who are different. The dread of what's going to happen to your kid when they go to school. And when my son entered first grade at Bear Tavern, one of the first things the teacher said to me when I was saying, well, how do you handle the fact that he's not in the general population most of the day? It's going to be so obvious to all the kids and he can't handle being in the general population. So when he's in the general ed classroom, he's with a para, everybody's going to see that, and he's not going to be able to handle the situation anyway. And she said, well, what we teach our students is that we have schools within the school and everybody gets what they need at their own school. And I just immediately felt so relaxed because I really felt supported and understood and I felt that my child was going to be safe. It just took so much of that fear and dread away. There's enough stress as a parent when you're trying to deal with a child with differences. So when you're helping these children, when you have these policies in place to keep our kids safe, you're truly helping the whole family because you're giving the parents also space in their minds to let the fear and let the dread abate a little bit and see to the other needs, which are tremendous, of these children that we have. Thank you so much for all you did for my son. Thanks.
Okay. Wow. It seems like my mic's the loudest. Everybody else, it's hard to hear. Before we close public, this public comment section, I just would invite Dr. Treese to say a few words.
I want to thank everybody who came and gave public comment today. I'm going to start with Dr. Alt because yours was about robotics and we're going to keep working. I know that we, I love his advocating for our robotics kids and thank you for your volunteer. It takes a lot of time out of your schedule and we'll work through it. We'll continue to work on the key access. To all the folks that came in support of policy 5756 and the parent, the grandmother who asked us to review this policy, we've come a long way in this district. I was over at Timberlane as a building level administrator when Dr. Tom Smith, the former superintendent, brought this policy to the community. And I remember watching the board meeting on television and the vitriol and the fighting and I think there was even a physical fight that night when they talked about the policy. But it has been in place. We were the, one of the first districts, I believe maybe the first district in New Jersey to adopt it. And the fact that we can come and peacefully talk about this policy, even those parents who are struggling with it still, in a peaceful way and not have to have John get up, my CSO is back there somewhere, and escort people out, right? Because it really got ugly, that conversation. And there are still districts in this state that, in places across the nation, that cannot have this conversation peacefully. So what I'm proud of as a district is that we're able to do that and to be here for all of our kids. And I thank everyone that gave these comments. Our policy chair will discuss our discussions that we had in policy today. But we thank you for coming out and we thank this community for being so caring and loving and being able to talk about the things that are hard to talk about and to do that peacefully. So thank you.
With that said, we will close public comment. And we do need to quickly duck back to our presentation because the board does need to approve and accept that. So can I get, do we need a roll call? Okay. Can I get a first and second to accept the report?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. The report is accepted. Are there any old business items? Seeing none, I need a first and a second to accept the consent agenda items.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, the consent agenda items pass. We'll go ahead and move into committee updates and reports. Dr. Resnick for finance?
I was not able to attend the committee meeting this time, so...
Mark, do you have any?
If it's Mark or Bob, can you step in for me?
No, you can, I insist. Jeez. Can't leave these guys even for one.
So yeah, we met last Tuesday evening. We discussed the ongoing issues we're having with some of our facilities, namely the sewer leaks, or sewer, yeah, sewer leaks at both Timberlane and Bear Tavern. The Bear Tavern sewer leak has been corrected for now and Timberlane is still ongoing. Now you, I'm trying to think what we talked about. We did meet with, we did discuss with the committee that we were going to be meeting with Hopewell Borough to discuss some of their planning needs, planning that's going on for expansion up in the borough. They brought us in as a partner, explaining to us what they have planned. They'll be announcing more of those plans in their meetings, but they just wanted to let us know that there is some plans for growth in the borough which could affect Hopewell Elementary School as well as the middle school and the high school. I think that might be it. Yeah, that was it. But yeah, it was a lengthy discussion on what was going on in Hopewell Borough. So there is an item on there for a donation coming from the Boys Varsity Barbecue Committee that, a donation of $500 that will be split among the girls soccer program and the boys soccer program. And a donation of $7,500 for wrestling chairs. I'm not sure what that is, but the donor would like to remain anonymous. So we are very grateful to receive items to benefit our programs as always. So could we get a motion and a second to accept the donations?
Motion. Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Donation is accepted. Moving on to, Mark for personnel?
Thank you, Mr. Calavita. So we met as a personnel committee earlier today, talked a few, about a few items that you're going to hear about and you can see on the agenda regarding personnel and the normal extracurricular appointments. We did have a bit of a sidebar conversation about the agreement also on the agenda and then we wrapped it up and came in here.
Can we get a first and second for moving the personnel actions?
First. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kapadia?
Yes.
Dr. Lilliston?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Slotman?
Aye.
Ms. Tracy?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hi, everybody. We met last, can you guys hear me? We let, we met last Thursday and we had Dr. Finn and Dr. Arslan, who are researchers for ETS. And they were kind enough to come and present on a study that we had participated in years ago and the focus was on remembered success effect, which explores preferences for challenging academic tasks that start or end with extra opportunities for success over tasks that do not. So an example of that would be adding in problems to make a student more successful and to give them an easier problem so that they would boost up the confidence of that success. And so this was a four-year study that would, and their findings included students in grades three, six, and nine showed a remembered success effect, which in turn impacted motivation. And there was partial support for whether these findings were generalized to other areas besides math problems. Dr. Arslan also is looking to do a new study that she would ask us as a district to participate in. Its focus is on context personalization using generative AI. However, she's still trying to figure out funding and so she will come back to us with more information in the spring about that. Ms. Riley, the principal of HVCHS, came to talk about addressing the NJGPA achievement gaps that we noticed. As you all might, might or might not remember, I presented on the NJGPA As you all might, might or might not remember, I presented on the NJGPA test scores in August, which is the 11th grade test that students take as part of a graduate who are identified as having below proficiency. We have created four possible tiers to help boost their proficiency. Also, we had a very lengthy conversation about other ways that we could maybe change the culture of attitudes toward testing and to create like more incentivizing. And so we talked about raffles or having breakfast on the day, so that was a conversation just about how we could maybe get the kids to, to be more excited about taking the test. And then finally, Mr. Needham, the supervisor of Special Education 612, proposed two new courses. One was for executive functioning support at Timberlane, which was a course helped to support special education students who are in an ICR setting, become a more independent learner. And we also, and he also proposed the college readiness math at the high school. And so this would be a fourth year math for special education students and the course would reinforce mathematical concepts from Algebra I, II, and Geometry.
Any questions? Okay.
So you mentioned the four things that you talked about for, for students who are now testing to a proficiency level. Are those going to be voluntary or what's, what's the process for?
So ideally, we would like for the students to participate in the semester elective. However, depending upon other courses that the students might be enrolled in, if they're not, if we're not able to fit that in the schedule, then we would go to our Plan Bs and Cs.
Okay, but it would be one of those things where the, we put together a plan for the student and then present it to?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Politzis. Okay, moving on to community relations. Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, we, we had a fairly, several, several members were not quite there, so, but we had a very good conversation about several things. One is being the, sort of the desilization of Hopewell. In other words, getting our students beyond the boundaries of Hopewell and working with other students. It's apparently fairly talks about student empowerment. And I've been talking to people at Bear Tavern about issues that get us, get the whole notion of empowerment and agency beyond the schools so that they, the kinds of learning they're doing in relationship to empowerment can be used, you know, in their families and beyond in the community. And finally, we're talking about SEL measurement, again, for getting kids to take the SEL learning they have and use it in their, in their home. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to SEL. Dr. Genovese?
So this will be a short report. I apologize. The SEL committee actually all participated in the Ruby Bridges walks with the different schools instead of having a formal meeting, which I thought was a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Dida. So getting to experience what our students are experiencing around some special events and really feeling history, I think is important. And I would actually encourage other committees to do that in the future, you know, get out with the kids, those of us who kids have graduated and aren't in the schools every day. It's good for us to see what the students are participating in as board members. So I thank you for that invitation and being able to participate in that.
Awesome. Thank you. I had a lot of fun. We are going to go ahead and move on to climate action and I'm going to do a surprise attack on Ms. McGrath. If you wouldn't mind just giving us a quick update, I know you've been running the committee.
I was not quite prepared, but I just wanted to say there's been a lot of student involvement at the high school level, which I'm really appreciative of. I think I have at least 10 students who are involved and are very enthusiastic about this work, so that's very positive. I, I just want to, my thoughts are not fully formed around this, so forgive me. Well, two things. Number one, right now is the Conference of the Parties in Baku, Azerbaijan. And for those who don't know, its world leaders are coming together to address climate change. We're in the warmest year on record and we've, we've now passed 1.5 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels, so things are not looking good. But one bright spot for me is one of our students' art pieces is on display at the conference. And I found out about that through social media. I was like, wait, that's Julia's painting. So that was very exciting. Just kind of bringing it back here to us. You know, of course, there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of what kind of support we're going to have from the federal level for climate action going forward. There's a lot of federal programs that have come through this past administration. My understanding is that some of them will still be funded or that money has already been allocated. So just, we haven't had a chance yet to meet with finance and facilities, specifically about facilities. But I just wanted to reiterate two items from facilities that really are sort of, in addition to education, the heart of the Climate Action Plan, which is to decarbonize school buildings and maximizing opportunities to advance decarbonization goals during renovations, new construction, et cetera. And there's funding that exists, of course, at the state level, but also funding that exists at the federal level. I have like a one pager if anybody wants to see it. So I hope that that, I know that there's an item on the agenda with regards to the high school. I hope that is something that can be considered. And I will also just say that I understand that as a school district, we can't...
Thank you so much.
Some of the work that they've been doing, I talked to you about the curricular work with gathering lesson plans and resources for our students and teachers. Carolyn and her work groups have also met with the green teams in each one of the schools and are trying to get parent volunteers to come bring back our gardens, the mini gardens that PTO and HVEF, the Hopewell Valley Ed Foundation, have funded over the years. So we're looking to bring back those green spaces and make sure they're cared for as parents and their kids move on to their next phase of life that we have younger families that are taking on, helping us keep those green spaces alive. And she's also identified some grant opportunities for, for transportation and for the boiler system that we're looking at right now. Unfortunately, we keep digging, a lot of times they don't look at school districts like ours, they look at the urban schools, but we're, we're going to continue to, to look and apply for these things and who knows? You can't, all you can be told is no. So we'll keep applying and hopefully we'll get some of these grants awarded to us over time.
So just to wrap up that comment, just a little bit of a mashup between SEL and climate action. This is one area that is a perfect example of something was mentioned earlier in public comment, is that our kids are, are struggling in a lot of different ways. They feel, they worry a great deal about climate issues, policy issues, the climate, the political climate. Those are all, even though we think they're young, it, it bleeds into their world. So what we can do is show up like the Climate Action Committee and do the work. We can make an impact on how our kids feel about how we're addressing their care and concern because sometimes there is, there's an erosion of trust when adults in their space don't respond to their worry. So no, we can't fix everything, but if we're not doing anything, our children feel particularly unheard and unsafe. This is a prime example of that as well as the other comments earlier. So I just want to celebrate what we're doing, but also underscore not only why it is important to keep pushing, to keep doing the work, is because it matters to our kids' futures and also how they feel right now in the here and now as, as protected by adults. So thank you for the work and we'll keep going. Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and move to Dr. Liliston and policy?
Okay, thank you. So the policy committee met on November 12th and we were joined by special guest Tripp Becker, who's the high school athletic director. We reviewed two policies during this committee meeting and are bringing one policy, one regulation, and one bylaw up for second reading today. So just first, a brief overview of the policies that were under review. So we reviewed the spectator code of conduct. So as you all might recall, in June 2024, the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, they call it the NJSIAA, passed a proposal that requires member school districts, of which we are one, to adopt a spectator code of conduct policy during the 24 to 25 school year. So this stemmed from some concerns around inappropriate conduct among spectators at sporting events and just an overall desire to promote a healthy playing environment for student athletes. So among other things, the code of conduct is required to include disciplinary measures for violating provisions of the policy as well as an educational component for violators. So our school district does not currently have a spectator policy, but we do have a code of conduct in place that parents are required to sign off on. This code of conduct that we have doesn't meet the level of specificity that's now being required by the NJSIAA. So the committee reviewed the association's model language and is recommending that the school adopts this to meet the new requirements. Because this isn't a policy, it doesn't need to come to this full board for review. However, Strauss Esme is developing a policy guide that's aligned with the NJSIAA's policy guidance, which will be distributed in February. So at that time, the policy committee is going to bring the policy associated with the spectator code of conduct for first reading. So keep an eye out for that. The second document that we reviewed was policy 5756, transgender and gender nonconforming students. So the policy committee was required to review this policy as part of the state's comprehensive equity plan. Additionally, we received updates to the policy from Strauss Esme for consideration and a request during public comment. So the committee did review this policy as well as comments from members of the board and consulted with our board attorney regarding their advice. Our board attorney's recommendation was that we maintain the language in the current policy as is because it meets the requirements under the New Jersey law against discrimination. The 2017 state statute, which requires the Commissioner of Education to develop and distribute guidelines concerning transgender students to school districts, the NJSIAA policy and the Department of Education's guidelines. So we thank the, the public and the board for their comments. The committee is recommending no revisions to the current policy. I'll stop there for a moment and ask if my policy committee colleagues have anything to add.
All I wanted to add was first, just to thank everyone for coming out tonight and, expressing their solidarity with our trans students and with the policy committee's decision to, to make sure that this policy is safeguarded and protected. One, one side of this that I really do want to show my gratitude to is, is our administration. We have some great voices on this board who are in support of policy 5756, but I also want to make sure that Dr. Treese, Ms. Smith, Dr. Politzis, all of you have done a phenomenal job, both when I was a student and now as a board member, of making sure that all of our students feel included and heard. So I just want to make sure that the public recognizes that you not only have partners with some of us as board members, but you also have partners in the administration that we have here in Hopewell. And something I've said in previous board meetings is as long as I'm on this board, you will always have a staunch advocate, activist, and protector for our trans students. So just want to reiterate that again as all of you took the time out of your busy schedules to come and speak at the meeting today. So thank you.
I'll just, just, just to echo again, first and foremost, just thank you all for, for coming out here and, and you know, sharing your, your testimony and statements. I think it sort of reinforces, you know, to me, why we're doing the things that we're doing here as a school district. So I just really appreciate that and, you know, echo everything that Dr. Liliston and Mr. Kapadia just said as well. But thank you all for, for coming out here and sharing your, sharing your testimony. We really appreciate it.
Comments?
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to second reading. So can I have a motion and a second to bring policy and regulation 5350, Student Suicide Prevention, and bylaw 0143.2, High School Student Representative to the Board of Education for second reading?
Motion. Second.
Okay, great. So first, we have the Student Suicide Prevention Policy. So just a little background here, policy 5350 and regulation 5350 lay out the district's requirements and process related to suicide prevention among students. So the committee revised the current Student Suicide Prevention Policy and regulation to ensure that they aligned with the updated training and reporting requirements outlined in state law as well as what's known to be best evidence and practice around youth suicide prevention. We want to do, we do want to thank some of the board members for their comments, including Dr. Wilson during first reading. We did have a discussion and we believe that the concerns that were expressed are addressed elsewhere in the district's curricula and policy. So we're recommending that this policy and regulation move to second reading with no additional revisions at this time. Next up, we have bylaw 0143.2. So this is the High School Student Representative to the Board of Education. So as a reminder, this bylaw authorizes the appointment of one or more student representatives to the board to serve for one school, full, full school year. The policy committee has revised the bylaw in order to really more meaningfully integrate student voice into board discussions by ensuring active student participation in full board meetings and committee meetings where applicable. So our proposed revisions now do constitute a new set of expectations for this position and as such, we are suggesting that these changes become effective in September 2025. So that would be the start of the next school year. So we did have a lively discussion about this at the last board meeting and based on comments that we received from the board as well as the public during first reading, we've integrated a few additional revisions, which you'll see here on your agenda. So we did increase the minimum number of student representatives to two students representing diverse perspectives. And we also included an application process by which administrative staff screen and recommend candidates for the position who the student body will then vote on. And this is really to account for the increased expectations associated with the position. So I will stop there and see if my policy colleagues have anything to add. Okay. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Bob, I think it's a roll call vote?
Yep.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yep.
Mr. Slotman?
Yes.
Ms. Tracy?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Dr. Genovacy?
Yes.
Mr. Kapadia?
Yes.
Dr. Lilston?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Very well. Okay, we are going to go ahead and move into accepting the November and December calendars or opening them for motion, first and second, for November and December calendars?
So move.
I'm going to start with finance facilities and I'm going to ask the members of the committee to delay a meeting date tonight, pending our internal meeting with the architect to make as a, a follow-up of last meeting was also to meet to get an updated list. So give us a chance to get that list and we'll set a meeting outside. Personnel will be 12:16, six o'clock. That's an easy one.
For Ed program, how is Wednesday, the 11th at like five? Jackie, Drew, Alex, Sarah?
Is there an alternative?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, really, the only evening I, it's not good for me is Thursday that week. So we could do Tuesday or Monday.
Which week is that, the 11th?
Yeah, the week of the ninth. The Monday's good for me.
Okay, do you think we could do it like maybe a little bit later, maybe 6:15?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry, I have class that night. Okay, thank you.
So December 9th at?
December 9th at 6:15 on Zoom, everyone?
6:15.
Actually, I take it back, that's the only day that I can.
That doesn't work? Okay, how about the 10th? Okay, we can, we can go to the week before. How about the 4th, December 4th?
I'm sorry.
December 4th.
Drew, you're killing me.
HVEA negotiations. I can do it right before then.
What?
We have negotiations at 6:00. You could do it before that.
I don't think they want to do it on a Friday. How about?
Could you do 6:00 PM on the 11th?
No. 6:00 PM on the 11th works for me.
Yeah.
12:11 at 6:00.
Okay, 12, okay, that's going, okay, going once? Okay, 12:11 at 6:00. Thank you.
Policy or SEL, Community Relations, anyone? SEL.
Hi. So I am an early bird, so I would love an early meeting if possible, like at 8:00 AM. Could you do the 10th, the 11th, the 12, oh no, the 12th I can't, the 10th, the 11th, or the 13th?
13 works for me.
13th at 8:00 AM?
13.
Jackie? No.
13's okay with me, too.
The 13th's okay with you? Okay. But not Jackie.
I'm only available until 8:40.
All right, you want to do 9:00 AM on the 13th? Can you do 9:00 AM?
That'd be fine.
She's available till 8:40.
No, no, I said I'm only available.
Until 8:40.
Oh, that should be all right. That's okay, yeah, let's do eight o'clock on the 13th.
Eight o'clock on the 13th.
SEL, Friday the 13th.
Policy, Community Relations.
Does the, does the 9th work for, for you all? Monday, the 9th?
What time?
I can do any time on the 9th, actually.
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
John, can you do?
5:30.
5:30's fine.
It's a policy, 5:30?
5:30, sure.
12:09.
I think that's going to work, but I might have to, I'll let you know, but 12:30, we're going to set it for now.
Okay.
That was policy?
Yep. And lastly, Community Relations.
With Community Relations, can we just do the next hour after SEL? Like the 13th at 10 o'clock?
I am at Roundtable.
Okay.
So I'm going to take that call and then go to Roundtable from 9:30 until 11:30, but it's just up the street at SyPac. So we can do after that, we can do.
What time?
I'm there until 11:30, so I can be, 12 after I'm coming.
So like 1 o'clock?
I can do 1 o'clock.
On the, on the 13th? Does that work for everyone else?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll make that work.
It'll work, okay.
I'm not available.
I'll make that work, Mike, yes.
I'm not, I'm not available.
Even though you're going to be on Spain.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That sounded interesting. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, calendars are passed. Any new business items?
What's the, what's the process?
So I'll just kick us off. I, we've had some board discussions about the opportunity to expand the conversation with government, government entities outside of our immediate body, could be local, et cetera. There are some challenges in terms of ethics and things that we need to pursue, so there is a recommendation on the table to explore, have an ad hoc committee, explore what it could look like to have a government engagement or government relations committee. So this will, this is the opportunity, and I'm going to defer momentarily to the Brain Trust, who raised the idea, and I think it is great, but I want him to take a moment to really express the vision. And then also just to say that we will, if we can form the structure for this ad hoc committee, then we'll vote or bring it to the table formally in December. But this is a discussion phase and new business, so Mr. Kapadia?
Yeah, no, thank you so much. I have had this conversation with some folks on the board, as well as folks in the administration. So apologies if this is the first time you're hearing of it. I've just noticed in, in the last 11 months, serving on the board and also working in local and state government, that our district, through all of its strengths, we sometimes have some shortcomings when it comes to communicating with local government and state government here in the 15th Legislative District and also in the intersection of Pennington Borough, Hopewell Borough, and Hopewell Township. You know, one thing about our school district that I think is so interesting and great is that we are the unifying institution between three municipalities who, as I'm sure many of you all know, if you're keeping up with local news, you know, tends to at times have conflicting and competing political interests. I see it as our responsibility to bridge that gap and make sure that we're having open lines of communication with our folks in Hopewell Township and Pennington Borough and Hopewell Borough. And just looking at the referendum and how that went over the course of the last year, I think it would be helpful if we had an entity that was, you know, had membership from the board, had membership from the administration, and met with our local government leaders on a regular cadence. So one aspect is meeting with our local government officials regularly. The other side is making sure we build a relationship with our state legislators in the 15th District. Other districts do this throughout the state. Having worked for a state senator representing the 16th District, which is a neighboring legislative district, we work with, you know, bigger school districts like Hillsborough, South Brunswick, to make sure that their financial resources and financial needs are met through the annual state budget process. Really, it's as simple as us meeting with 15th, meeting with the 15th Legislative District legislators and having a conversation about what are some line items that we could use help with, whether those are small or big ticket items. It's really about exploring new means of securing resources for our district. The worst answer we can get is no, but I think having that conversation and starting it right now is really our best step forward. And as, I mean, our finance and facilities folks know it best, we do have a very tight budget and we have a lot of fiscal constraints, and so exploring potential other forms of resources and securing dollars for our district, I think, is in the best interest for all of our students. So that's kind of the primer. I'm more than happy to answer any questions from my fellow board members and just to have this discussion before we make things more official in December and as we move into 2025.
Alex?
So I'll start, maybe? So first of all, thank you for driving this, because I really like the idea. I know in the last three years that I've been here, we've had a number of occasions where we would come across an issue and would be like, well, this is really impacting districts in a negative way, and it's not clear that the folks in Trenton that put this thing in place realize, quite realize the impact. And I can't remember a specific one right now, but I know we've had the conversation. Would this be a, yeah, would this be, would this committee be a means for us to actually feed those things back?
Yeah, it absolutely would be, and I talked about this with Mr. Peters. We do oftentimes find ourselves on the ground level, struggling to implement certain policies that come out of Trenton, and I think there's a lot of times where there's well-intentioned policies that get passed by the legislature and signed by the governor, but when it comes to implementing them, you know, in our district, there tends to be challenges. So I think this would be an opportunity for us to at least speak to legislators and have an avenue to talk to them about some issues we're having.
Question?
In the past, I've worked as a lobby, lobbyist with, for different organizations, on the state and the federal level. And when you're lobbying, it helps to have a fairly good-sized body of people that you're representing. Now, are we going to, could, or do you include in this, the sense of developing this sort of power base in Hopewell?
I mean, I would love to see how this committee takes form. I think one aspect, as we're moving into next year, that I'm really proud of, that Dr. Lilston has spearheaded, is the idea of expanding the role and responsibility of the student representative. So we'll be able to have more, you know, in-depth student perspectives as we move into, you know, talking with our local government folks and our state government folks. The other aspect is, you know, we haven't exactly formulated who is going to sit on this committee. So if there is, you know, room and interest for community members to, or community liaisons, as we have different positions on the, on the board to be able to give their input, I would be more than open to it. But I think, right now, the initial idea is just seeing how, how we can move forward with establishing, you know, a bare bones of, of starting these conversations, because it's, you know, it's completely new infrastructure, and I'm very flexible, and I think, you know, the more community voices, the better.
So I just wanted to share that, and to, to help move this process along, as this, as this idea was brought to me and the board secretary, I reached out to the board's attorney, who, who has asked you all to go with caution, and he suggested that, he doesn't know of any school boards that do this, because it's sticky. He says you have to really be careful with, because we're not, you're not really a political entity, and really, the only voice of the board that can speak is, is the board president. So that being said, he forwarded me to the board's representative, which is Mary Ann Friedman, who is the one who did our strategic plan. She is now a representative for school boards. And she is looking out to see, and I suggested the districts you talked about, what districts have something like this in place and what the structures are, and what kind of guardrails you need to put in place to protect you all ethically for this work. So that being said, when she gets back to me, I'll let you all know what she comes up with, and that should help you kind of get an idea of what this needs to look like and how you need to, how you need to shape it. I think having parents on it and having it sort of driven by the community members is probably what those other districts are doing, and I share that with you, but there's no reason why you can't have that kind of collaboration, sort of like what happens with Club and Action and some of the other groups that we have.
Can I just, you were going to say?
No, no, I was going to wrap this.
I was, I was just going to make a comment, so I would like to just publicly very much endorse this.
Can you speak into the mic?
I would just like to publicly very much endorse this.
There we go.
I have been outspoken, to say the least, regarding the current community crisis that I believe that we are in, and I think that you being able to step up with this idea is an important one. I would encourage, as this comes together, that my fellow board members, administration, those in the room right now, those watching on TV, think about this as a way to collectively bring the three forms of government together, which is a very serious situation right now on many levels, so that we can actually come to some consensus in the community around things fiscally that are important, while we have a lot of passion around a lot of the ideas in the community. One that we can't lose sight of is the fact that we have a fiscal situation that is brewing amongst the school district, as we all know, amongst each levels of those government, and at the state level, that we need to be very cognizant of right now. So I am fully supportive of it. I commend you on bringing it up. I hope we can do it.
So thank you, thank you, Mr. Kapadia, I'm sorry, not enough coffee in here. But these are the ways that we shift and grow with the times and what's needed, so I really appreciate the ideas that you have brought forward and Dr. Lilston as well. So we'll look forward to hearing more in December about how we can form that committee effectively and safely and ethically. With that, I'm going to close this out for new business and move us into public comment. And this is a open public comment. So members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter of, for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. With that, public comment is now open.
Hi, Catherine Fulmer Hogan, Hopewell Township. I have had the pleasure of engaging with many of you on a number of different levels, and beyond being crazy smart and incredibly thoughtful, one thing I can say about all of you is that you have an unwavering commitment to doing what is best for kids, and you upheld that commitment this evening, and I am full of gratitude. Thank you.
And Kate, I wish I could say the same, that I would have had the opportunity to speak to many of you, as Kate seems to have the opportunity to do, on a personal level, but that's for another time. I would like to read and say that I totally support the school board's transgender policy and the purpose. The Hopewell Valley Regional School District is committed to providing a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment for all students, including transgender students, and ensuring that every student has equal opportunity and equal access to the district's educational program and activities. I requested that the policy be reviewed, simply because... I requested that the policy be reviewed, simply because there are some things in it that I thought you might want to look at. Because policies written and approved by the school board should use words and terms that facilitate clear communication. They should be based on factual and accurate information. They should be free from ideological and political bias, and they should ensure that all students have a safe and supportive school experience with fair and equal opportunities to achievement and success. There are some sections of this policy that need to be corrected, because they contain misinformation or disinformation. Misinformation is defined as false or inaccurate information. We could describe it as getting the facts wrong. And disinformation is defined as false information which is deliberately intended to mislead. The current policy fails to define basic terms. I've said this before, sex, male, female. It contains phrases like sex assigned at birth, gender assigned at birth, and all people have a gender identity, which are prime examples of misinformation, because they just deny scientific facts and objective truth. It promotes an ideological theory in regards to sex, gender, and sexuality that says that females and males are the same and interchangeable, that categories like males and females are oppressive and artificially created, and that objective reality is non-existent. And as we've seen in sports, in competitive sports even this year, that it doesn't allow female rights to privacy, dignity, safety, feelings, equal opportunity, and fair competition in competitive and sports, and it means that it doesn't matter. Thank you.
Hi, Suez Polinsky, Hopewell Township. I said before that I'm a pediatrician, words matter. The, I believe that some of the phrases that it seems like you're referring to are evidence-based, peer-reviewed phrases and words and labels used in the medical literature and the psychological literature. I would like to just briefly read from the American Psychological Association Policy Statement on Affirming Evidence-Based Inclusive Care for Transgender, Gender-Diverse, and Non-Binary Individuals: Addressing Misinformation and the Role of Psychological Practice in Science. I'm just going to pull a couple pieces that feel relevant. Whereas legislative efforts to restrict access to care have involved dissemination of misleading and unfounded narratives, for instance, mischaracterizing gender dysphoria as a manifestation of traumatic stress or neurodivergence, equating affirming care for transgender, gender diverse, and non-binary youth with child abuse, creating a distorted perception of the psychological and medical support necessary for these youth, and creating a hostile environment that adversely affects their mental health and well-being. Whereas such misinformation is widely disseminated through formal and informal networks, yet credible scientific evidence has not been widely disseminated and is not readily accessible to the public, having the potential to further stigmatize and marginalize all transgender, gender diverse, and non-binary individuals, hindering their access to indicated and necessary health care, worsening existing geographic disparities and to health care access and fostering an environment that may lead to discrimination. Some of the words that you're talking about are words that have been agreed upon because they protect people. You can, we, the grownups, can like them or not like them, we can think of them as the words that we grew up with, or we can be uncomfortable with the change that we're asked to make, but they are necessary to protect our kids. The resolutions that the, one of the resolutions that the APA states is therefore, be it resolved, that the APA opposes efforts to obstruct access to evidence-based interventions for children, adolescents, and adults advocating for inclusive health care coverage without gender-based discrimination, and it urges support for policies facilitating access to gender-affirming health care for children, adolescents, and adults, recognizing the positive impact on mental health outcomes. I think it's really important that while I recognize I'm citing from medical literature, these kids spend half their day, half their waking hours in these buildings, these buildings need to stay safe, and if we, the grownups, are not uncomfortable with the words, then we need to educate ourselves, and we need to come together in forums like this to educate other people, but go back to the way it sounded when I was a kid, is not, is not the way to teach our children and to keep them safe. Thank you very much for choosing to retain the policy, I, I appreciate that.
Okay. Any comments?
I want to thank Ms. Kosis again for getting up and giving her comments, and also Suez Polinsky, Dr. Polinsky, for also sharing the, the research that's out there. I just want to affirm that the work that the committee did, they did take this seriously. Dr. Lilistine, I know you can tell by the way she talks, is, is quite a master researcher. Mr. Slotman and Mr. Kapadia are both very deep in the policy world. They dug, and we all looked at the code, we talked to folks. We also looked at the code that's already in place by the NJSIAA, the Interscholastic Sports Association, that the students play under. They have guidelines in place to make sure that there's not uneven competition, or that students are safe when they're competing, when, when they're competing against transgender students, and you can't just up and say I'm transgender today and compete on, on a team that is your gender identity. There has to be evidence that's who you are, and that there can't be an adverse, you know, safety or competition major imbalance, and that, so that's handled outside of our policy. So again, we did review the policy, and, and keeping with all of our research and what is expected of us at the state of New Jersey and what's right for kids, we've decided at this time to not change the policy.
And one just final note. When we use words like disinformation, misinformation, and use a definition straight read, we are making an opinion about what falls into each of those buckets. The important thing that is required by this board and this administration per our direction is that there are documents, peer-reviewed, and otherwise research-based information that our policies are grounded in. So at no time do our policies veer off into some general misinformed social media resource. Multiple documented sources of information support the policy, and will continue to support the work that we do as a full body, and specifically as we set policies for our children. The key here is safety for all children. Full stop.
Ms. Kosis did bring us from newspapers, reputable newspapers, op-edds, and some, some other research that's out there, but again, what we had really outweighed, and we did review all the materials that you did bring us, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the board before we move on to pub, to close public comment? Okay, seeing no comments, public comment is now closed. I need a first and second to move into executive session for the full board.
So moved.
Second. Just as a statement, there, we are going to be addressing HIB matters, as well as personnel matter for employee 8773, and student, student matters involving two students, no action will be taken at this time. All in favor of moving into executive session? Any, sorry, any opposed or abstaining? Okay, seeing done, we are now in public. Forum is closed and moving into executive session. Thank you all for coming this evening, we very much appreciate your involvement.